All right, and now we'll just introduce ourselves and that will help the AI help take notes from this meeting. Matthew, let's begin with you.
We give a name.
Your name?
Matthew Hoffman.
Right, we're just doing a, this, this will help the AI note taker associate your voice and your name. So that when you talk.
Anthony Hoffman is summer student at Landmark College.
Okay, thank you.
Bert Tepfer, advisory committee member of Pudney.
Eden Parities.
Joe Grant is owning finance.
Don King, the Housing Task Force.
Connie Richards, Putney Housing Solution Task Force and Putney Advisory, Housing Advisory Committee.
Philip Wilson, advisory committee for Pudney.
Karen Aslee, town manager, zoning administrator.
Michael McConnell, Lincoln Regional Commission.
Bill Admister, planning commission.
Sue Coughley, planning commission chair. Online?
We got one more.
Oh, there's one more in the room?
Yes.
I'm sorry. No, Don, Don didn't introduce yourself.
Okay, sorry, that's all right, I didn't hear.
Not the biggest voice. And Ryan, would you just say hello, please?
Hi, I'm Ryan, I'm a Putney community member and on the zoning and housing committees.
Thank you, Courtney?
Hi, I'm Courtney, I'm a community member and a member of the advisory.
Thank you, Courtney, and Andrew?
Andrew Morrison, member of the planning commission, I'm the clerk.
Thank you, Andrew, Robert?
I'm Robert O'Brien at Camon Associates.
And Catherine?
I'm Catherine Fonsby at Camon Associates.
Okay, welcome everyone. Okay, um, now. Would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes from November 12th?
Your move to approve the November 12th planning commission minutes.
Andrew, would you like to second that?
I will second that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? I will note a couple of tables in them, uh, when we left the meeting, as we were leaving the meeting, I did another one of the exit polls of the strategies and you'll see the results of that. Is that it here? The, uh, page three of the minutes is sort of showing what was ranked top, but if you go to attachment B, the very last page, you'll see it, the full ranking and compared to the community meeting number one, just to give you an idea of where people were landing, I thought it was useful, so that's part of the minutes. And you will also see listed uh, the results of the breakout discussions that we had at the meeting as attachment A. When we talked about action plans for some of the strategies. Any comments on the minutes? Very none. Uh, I'll call motion, uh, call the motion to approve, all in favor would be me and Andrew?
Hi.
Thank you. Appreciate that, okay. Minutes done. So our next item is really to turn to the discussion with Camon Associates, as we do that, I want to call attention to a memo that I sent to you all on the 29th, now, Don, I think I copied you on it actually. Tried to copy everybody attending the meetings, that has suggested revised schedule for our work. When we ended the last meeting and as you see reflected in the minutes, uh, we felt that we needed more time to think about the strategies, we both appreciated the conversation uh, at the last meeting in small groups, it felt like they were for the first time really thinking about these and that we needed more of that. So this schedule, um, and it'll be reflected in Camon's slides as well, they picked this up. What proposes not to have a meeting on December 18th, the community meeting, but to put that off to January 30th. And to instead allow ourselves a couple of half-day workshops to work through prioritization of the strategies and action plans for those that rise from that. And you'll, we'll have some good information tonight and Camon that will help us do that prioritization. Um, and then we would, uh, meet again like this, a special planning commission meeting. Usually we have one a month, a regular meeting, but I would call a special one on January 14th to then take a look at how the results of those workshops are now reflected in a draft report in Camon, so I'll be sharing that information with them. And, and working with them to provide a full report and to prepare them for, um, the community meeting number two, which will actually be, uh, at the moment, January 30th is the date that Camon can do it, I have not yet found a location for the meeting, uh, next stage is already booked, it's the only thing in January, but, um, I will find a spot. If that is the date, and then we would meet again as a final meeting on Monday, February 10th. To have a special meeting again to review a final draft report. Uh, that would be reflective of what was learned at the, um, January 30th meeting. And then we would be presenting the final report to the select board on February 19th. So this extends the schedule, gives us more time and a couple of workshops. So we'll be talking more about that today, but I just wanted to point out that that's sort of the proposal on the table with extending the schedule. And I will want to confirm it at some point, but I, I will let Camon give their presentation, which reflects it as well. Although the back page, uh, shows the, um, schedule on the calendar, looks sometimes a little easier to see it that way along with other planning commission meetings. Okay, so I just wanted to go over that, with that, I am now going to, uh, Robert, I think I shared with you uh, my screen, I don't know if that's sufficient, Catherine, there you go, allow again. Okay, there we go, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Sue, uh, nice to see everyone, let me pull up a presentation.
And you all have this presentation in your packet, it's this document, it's a, it's a, well, it's, you'll see it in color on screen. It was, it seemed like black and white was going to work well enough and. Okay.
Okay. So I have, uh, four sections, I just want to touch upon, one will be a timeline of what we've done to date. Uh, then I'd like to review, uh, the, the results from the public survey, some of those were in the findings, but we want to go into a much more detail. And then we're going to talk, um, about some target numbers for where we think housing demand is in the next five years. And then finally, I'd like to wrap up with how we're recommending you might prioritize the action plan, which is open to your input, of course. Uh, we'll pause a moment throughout this, uh, for your feedback and some discussion, but until then, let me jump right into it. Very good. All right, just a quick summary of where we've been to date, uh, this is, um, we, we've done so much so far that we just want to recapture for a moment, uh, what we've already accomplished. So in late August, uh, Tom Doritzky, a, a colleague of mine, uh, came and toured Putney and, uh, participated in seven roundtable interviews, uh, in the town, and then we conducted several subsequent phone calls after that visit. On September 30th, we closed the public survey that you all know about, we had 371 responses, which was excellent, we're all very excited about that. On October 1st, at a meeting of, uh, this planning commission, uh, we presented our data reports, uh, with John Walker, our, our data analyst. And at that meeting, we also, I presented, uh, draft strategy, what I called approaches at that time, where they're more in idea format and listened to your feedback. On October 21st, we had the public workshop at Landmark College that many of you attended. At that, at that meeting, uh, I presented findings, the data findings, and updated goals and strategies reflective of your feedback on October 1st. On November 12th, we had another planning commission meeting that, um, Catherine and I attended remotely, where we reviewed updated findings, goals and strategies, and, uh, the commission and other, uh, members of the public workedshopped a draft action plan or what were implementation steps, uh, where we broke onto groups into that. On November 18th, I understand locally, Camon Associates was not part of this, but I understand locally, there was a gathering with some speakers and that group brainstormed some next steps, we, uh, received some feedback from that. And then that brings us to tonight, December 3rd, another meeting in the planning commission, uh, where we'll workshop some strategies, actions, plan and priorities. Uh, Sue went over this in detail, so I will just touch upon it very briefly, but, uh, the, the several public workshops coming up, uh, where we continue to work through the strategies and build out the action plan. Uh, where we'll continue to receive feedback, uh, from this group and members of the public on the full report as it comes together, uh, next month. And then finally, we will, uh, submit the final draft report and then the final report in February.
Robert, just one, yeah, Robert, just one comment quick, I just noticed this. I'm trying to remember, oh, the number, November 18th, public workshop, that was November 16th? And that was the, that was not the planning commission, but actually that was the, uh, our, our future Putney Housing Solutions Task Force, so I just want to correct that, that was.
For the record.
And it was not, not the planning commission, but it was something that, that we referenced and, and many of us attended.
Yes, and I don't have reference to the planning commission in that bullet, so.
Yeah.
Good to, good to distinguish. All right. Uh, from current slide, and we'll move forward. So we've covered this, Sue covered it as well, and we'll move into some results we found from, uh, the public survey. So we have three slides, another difficult to read on your screen from where you're sitting, as, as Sue said, many of you have handouts in front of you. Uh, but these are just snippets of various different, um, data points that we pulled from the survey. Uh, not all of them are impactful, but they do give a sort of a blush impression of what we were hearing back from that, that survey. As I said, I have three slides and, and this slide focuses on the demographics of, uh, self-reported information of what people, how they identify themselves taking it, so. To start off, uh, the survey was released on September 10th and closed on September 30th and ultimately receives 371 responses. Among them, 2% uh, work in Putney, but are not a resident and are interested in moving to Putney, this is just among survey respondents. 1% do not live or work in Putney but would like to move and move to Putney, they got a hold of the survey and filled it out. Um, moving down, 64% of respondents own their home, actually, can you see my, do you see, does my cursor float on the screen if I move it?
We're seeing it, yes.
Okay, great, that might be helpful instead of me just, uh, calling all off this, so, six, so, uh, 64% um, were homeowners and 23% are renters and 32% uh, have no mortgage on their home. Among, uh, the individuals who took this, 29% were families with children, 70% were a couple with no children, 22 were, uh, solo adults and then 8%.
Hang on a second. We've, we've lost the screen, but it'll be back in a second, I think.
Yeah, I will leave this out.
How many glitches can we have in one evening?
Many.
Yeah, hang on, we're, we're not there yet, I can see you, but on my screen, nobody else, okay. Yeah, let me, I have to go back to doing some settings. That's a good thing they're not gonna do this today.
While they're doing that, Robert, uh, Courtney messaged and said, looks like the male female response rate was pretty lopsided, do you want to speak to that for a second?
Sure, so, um, I know you can't see on your screens, but, uh, among self-reported, um, genders, 60% identified as female, 30% identified as male, uh, 3% other and, uh, almost six and a half skipped the question. I will say that this is, this is quite common, we see this in many towns, I've only had, um, one community where it was closer to 50/50, but virtually every other community I've worked in, um, the genders come back 60, 60/30 or thereabouts. Sometimes 75, 25, but you know, it's, it's typically lopsided, I don't have a great, you know, explanation why, but I will say that is, that is frequently the case.
Um, when you're saying it usually comes back upside, I guess it usually more women filling out the.
Yes, predominantly more women, uh, to male. Female to male.
I don't understand that central square there, that, that adds up to 129%.
I'm sorry. Great, yes, there's some of these, uh, some of these were not limited to, um, to one response, so, um, let's see, maybe. Actually Catherine, if you have the, Catherine has the full survey nearby, maybe you could visit that and see if, how that one's being computed.
I have a question, Robert, this is Karen. Um, I need the map too, Sue, are these not to add up to 100%?
So there are, yeah, as I was saying a moment ago, there are several of them where you could be double counted. Uh, for employment, for example, I had the same question earlier, uh, you can be both employed and self-employed if you selected more than one answer.
Okay.
You could technically be retired and a student, uh, you know, I'm just saying that, you could also be employed and a student, so there are some places where you could be double counted if you selected more than one box. And it, you know, it may be. Sorry.
But, Robert, we're, we're having screen issues, it's sort of killing time here a little bit. Um, in the employment box, you have both, uh, 49% employed and 23% self-employed. Are those two separate groups or might they be overlapping circles of people?
Uh, there's going to be some overlap, we know that much. It, it, it is possible, we could print out a, um, an Excel sheet that would have it line by line, it's still anonymous, but you can see uh, whether responded, responded to each question, and we could separate that out, it's not relevant to the ultimate strategies, so we're, we won't likely take up that time, but yes, there's going to be some, uh, overlap, Pippa, as you, as you pointed out. And it, it's also, um, you know, in retrospect, whether we may have, uh, framed that question differently for several of these, where you cannot select more than one, but select the one that you most closely identify with, or whether it's more important to select both students who are also employed, you know? It's, it's a, it's, you know, not quite sure what the preference would be ultimately, but that's what's happening in several cases where, where people can be double counted, because they fall into more than one bucket.
Thank you.
Catherine, do you have anything with the, um, people identified household individuals?
Sure, yep, and to answer the question, so we were asking about, um, the families with children, couples with no children, single individual, adult dependent, is that the question?
Yes, yes, why it doesn't add up to 100?
Sure, um, so I think the issue here is that couples with no children, that's not couples with no children, it should be, um, that, that is not necessarily couples with no children, that is my spouse slash partner, but it's not, um, just my spouse slash partner, it's, it can be couples, but it doesn't mean no children.
Great, I'm gonna correct that right now. Great, so that's a case where you can be doubly counted. And is there any resolution to the screen in the room?
Yeah.
All right, you're back up, you're live, okay. Um, all right, just to wrap up this screen then, uh, ages formed a nice bell curve, as you can see at the bottom, bring my mouse around. Uh, so 9% were under the age of 35, uh, adults, um, then there's, uh, mid-age range of 35 to 55 for a third of respondents. The 55 to 75 were 40%, and folks over 75 years old were 12%. So a nice bell curve representing the local population of adults. And household income, um, wa- was spread quite all over the place. 13% were under $25,000 a year in income, 22% were, uh, between 25 and 50,000. 18, 50 to 75, 13% 75 to 100, 16% were 100 to 150. And then 9% were over 150, so an undulating line of, of, of mixed incomes, but uh, there were representations across the broad income spectrum as well. Any questions or further comments about this slide before I move on, I have two more related to the.
Keep going, Robert.
Very good, okay. Um, so here are some of the more substantive responses of feedback, what folks said, what did the community say about housing? Uh, the top issues, uh, for those who are unsatisfied with their current housing situation, number one was the condition and quality of their housing. Number two was the cost of the housing, and number three, uh, that it was sized inappropriately for their current needs. The top housing issues identified in Putney were, uh, 63% whereas housing availability, availability generally, 62% uh, talk about the cost of houses and 50% talk about the cost of taxes. This is also one where you could select your top three, and which is why we're having, um, so 63% of all respondents uh, selected as one of their top three, uh, housing availability. Uh, jumping down, would you consider moving to, uh, to smaller county, would you consider downsizing in the next five years? If the housing options, uh, suited your needs and budget and they were available. 22% less than a quarter said yes, they would consider downsizing, half, over half said no, and then 23% about a quarter said they would consider it. This one was a resounding yes, do you think Putney's municipal government should be involved in assisting with housing goals? 91% came back with a solid yes. Oh, so among respondents, uh, 85% said that their current housing meets their needs. Uh, current, um, 44% said current housing will meet their needs for the next decade. So no big changes on the, on the immediate horizon, and then 15% said housing does not currently meet their needs. Specifically why survey takers chose to live in Putney, number one was neighborhoods, uh, community and services here, and number two was family or social ties in Putney. And then finally, Putney's top positive added tru- attributes are, number one, quality schools, uh, going down the list, safety and low crime, cultural offerings, a strong sense of community and open space and recreation. Any thoughts, questions or comments before I jump ahead? Okay. And the final slide we have, just a summary, and I also want to say that we can, we'd be more than happy to release the full, uh, report to you. You can go through every question, see the results from it, uh, but this is just a snapshot, uh, summary. Uh, housing needs in, from the survey. Rental preferences of, for apartments, among those who are interested in renting an apartment, a third say they want a two-bedroom apartment. Uh, 27% said they want, want, want a one-bedroom apartment among house rental, uh, as a desired housing source. Uh, 37 wanted two-bedroom and 27% want a three-bedroom. Uh, we did have, we did offer for, um, different circumst-, you know, beyond just renting a house or renting an apartment, some other items on the menu, if you will, 17% said they would be interested in interest-based rental housing community. That might be LBGTQ or some other, uh, interest-based rental, uh, community. 15% uh, were interested in land for tents, tiny house, RV, trailer, some sort of, um, non-traditional um, housing type, but land, uh, to live there, and 19% uh, said they'd be interested in seeking senior housing, se- senior housing rentals. Uh, 27% of those seeking rentals agreed, many rent prices exceeded their budget, going in, going in to look for an apartment. Uh, moving to the middle, 48% of respondents have considered moving due to housing affordability issues. Among, oops, I'm sorry, among home buyer prefer, home buying preferences, 76% just wanted to detach, single-family house, the traditional model. And then moving down in, uh, in, in a percentage, 47% want a house with an in-law apartment or an ADU. 41% uh, want a single-family home for ease of mobility. 33 or a third want, uh, a townhouse condo or row home, and then 26% uh, would like a duplex, triplex or fourplex. Uh, there was, we found there was very low inventory for, or buyers, uh, found there was very low inventory for sale, 32% said that. And when they were on the market, there were very few choices, uh, for the desired housing type, 26% said that. And prices exceeded their expectations coming out of the market, uh, over a quarter said that. So, um, that concludes my last slide on the survey, anything that folks want to remark on before we move into next topic?
Okay, um, I would like to, uh, bring out a point that has not been mentioned, but I think it's very important for us to consider, especially when we start talking about solutions. One of the survey results that I recall was what I was somewhat surprised by, and one of the few things I was surprised by in the survey, is that about one-third of the property owners in the town would consider re, uh, enlarging their apartment or, or house to create more housing. And I was amazed that one-third of the respondents were able to say that, when we talked about indoor housing or whatever, uh, how we can create housing. Uh, and I do not see that in any of your highlight or key statements or anything, and I, I think that's a very important, uh, piece of information that ought to be brought forward.
Yes, yes. Very good. Great, I've taken note of that, that's, that's a very good point, I'll revisit that one.
I can't see if my hand is raised, but I have a comment.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Andrew.
Andrew Morrison via Zoom. And I know this is probably fairly self-evident, but I wanted to highlight that the survey asks people what attributes brought them to the town of Putney or keep them in the town of Putney. And I think that is a really important starting point for any conversation related to housing. Obviously, the community is looking to relieve the housing crisis and the housing strain here, but we need to be cognizant of doing that in a fashion that doesn't fundamentally alter those attributes of Putney that have been the reason that so many came here to call it home.
Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, so, any other questions on the survey? We have some other material to review, this is all just sort of helping us as we think about prioritization of strategies, all of us, useful. And thank you for the comments, Bert and Andrew. All right, let's move on, Andrew, Robert, if you're ready.
So, um, the next, uh, two slides, I've broken down, uh, some of the analysis that John Walker, our analyst, did for us, where he estimated, uh, demand in different housing types and price points and tenure, uh, for the next five years in Putney. And these can be construed as sort of target numbers, um, uh, for, for success. What, what does the housing plan look like, uh, when it succeeds? So you have seen these numbers, these aren't, these aren't new, these were provided on October 1st. But, uh, we want to revisit them and break them down a little bit more to understand them a little better, so, um, here on the left, uh, this is where we come up with that, that number 80, as, as many of you have referenced before, when you've looked at this, it's, it, it derives from anticipated household growth in Putney. Um, those, a number of houses that are dwellings that may be due for replacement, um, the potential relo- relocating workers into Putney, um, and, oops, excuse me. And young adult households, households formerly residing with their parents, uh, that is just not a, a good fit, so. Uh, you can see those are broken down between ownership units and rental units, uh, for each category, with a total of owner, owner units being 44, renter units being 36, for a total of 80. What we see over here is, uh, John Walker was able to break those down by anticipated, uh, income levels and the demand for each type of unit. And where you see a negative is where John found a softening in demand, which may allow for a unit to come available on the market. And so that, those will be deducted from, um, from the, the grand total. So up here, I, I have, um, summarized that this, uh, this, um, this table over here on the right, which breaks it down by household income level, among those, there, we, there's a demand for 13 affordable ownership homes. Those could be condos or single-family homes, uh, whatever, 35 market rate homes, new construction, 35 affordable apartments at different, uh, price points, and one more market rate apartment. And this does not, as Sue pointed out this afternoon, this does not add up to 80, and it's up to 84, but some of these softening numbers we see, um, are, are, a softening of, um, ownership units between the, the income brackets of 50 and, and $100,000. Three units there, and then for folks under $35,000, one softening there, so those. So those get recycled back into and can, and can um contribute uh to the marketplace. So um, that is one way in which we, this, these, this count of thirteen, thirty-five, thirty-five, and one. Are ways to break down different tenures, housing types um in the next five years to focus on where we need development.
Well, I'll make a comment if I might, when I've been looking at this and thinking about what does it mean for our strategies? And one important thing is we look at thirteen affordable ownership homes and thirty-five affordable apartments. It means that that's the, you know, like sixty percent of the new housing needs to be affordable, whether it's apartments or, or ownership. And I think that's really important in how we think, how we go about what are we, what are we providing? Certainly, some of it's market rate, but, but that's just an important dimension of the goal, and I wanted to point that out. I think the other thing I would note that is not totally clear to me in all of this, but I think it comes from. Looking at the numbers of who is cost burdened. Uh, quite a lot of older adults, otherwise sometimes under seniors, are uh, are cost burdened. And so in another dimension is a significant portion of this housing probably needs to be what I, I would call accessible housing. Uh, not just for older adults, but just generally accessible so that it could uh provide that. So I'm just looking at this and trying, and looking at the other information, saying, what does this tell us about what we need? Uh, so accessible housing and affordable housing are important dimensions, I think, of these goals. You can't tease it out from this, but when you go back and look at the other findings that, that came from the market research. I don't know, Robert, if you would agree with that or not, but I think that is important for us to have in mind as we think about the strategies.
It is, um, so let me actually segue. So I have uh one more slide on this, on this topic, and I want to speak to what Sue just brought up, which was the cost burn households. So there is another dimension to this uh that where we do not count these uh for as new construction demand. They are folks, uh, the, oh, sorry, this represents, uh, the, this table represents Putney residents who are currently sheltered, who currently have housing. But their housing circumstances um is somewhat untenable or um could be improved. The other, the other issue, um, the other issue with this is that you can be doubly counted on it. So uh, it is not a sum total, it is a number of instances uh that could be repeated. So for example, uh, you can see on your screen, this cost burden, I'm gonna jump over renter upgrades. Uh, there's overcrowded households, and there are households in substandard housing units. Uh, all three of those could be the exact same household in one instance. So uh, this just shows a number of instances uh where there are um cost-burned households, people spending more. Uh, than thirty percent of their income on their housing costs, and in some cases, much more. The overcrowded housing, um, those all happen to be in rental units, but those are circumstances where there are, are way more people than a lot of bedrooms. In those, in those rental units. And then uh, housing in substandard units, um, those are, this is a um, this is a census product where people report that the, the conditions, they don't have basic accommodations. In, in their housing. That uh, so this overcrowded and substandard, you can see there's twenty-seven in each, that's likely to be double counted, those likely to be the same households. Um, renter upgrades are the number of households who are currently renting. Uh, that we've been able to calculate could afford more rent than what they're currently paying. Um, or potentially afford a mortgage as well, if there were even, you know, houses available to buy. But the point is that there's demand from that group, um, that a hundred and six households total. That uh would be available to move up to a higher-grade apartment, thereby opening up their apartment uh for another renter. Or to, to buy, purchase a house if it became available on the market at their, at their price point. So there is additional demand, uh, but just may not be, new construction may not be the solution to it. Um, or it may be, uh, but uh, these aren't, these aren't a sum total, and uh, we want to do, we acknowledge that. I also want to, jumping back to that first slide uh with the eighty and how we broke it down, uh, point out that these are. These are elements of, of magnitude. Um, we're trying to show uh not, not a precise number that you can get to, that, that is not really knowable. Uh, the precise number, but what we do is we have a good sense of the target number. Uh, you should be uh going toward uh to meet your housing goals to correct the market locally. So it's an order of magnitude that we want to emphasize, not necessarily a precise count uh of, of what might be, what by meaning, might be, might be needed.
In that, in that regard, do you have any comment?
Yes.
Um, I was concerned about your estimate of how many uh, how, um, how the units will be due for replacement is your second line there.
Yeah.
Um, the next five years, you had considered six units of housing owned, and then four of rented, that would be, needed to be replaced. Um, and I thought that was a little low because of the, my own personal experience of visiting some of the places around here. And I went to the minister's office and asked uh for a description of how many house, how many of the housing that, that we just inspected. It's uh, as the estimates of reevaluation.
Empraisals, yeah.
Have done recently, uh, how many were considered in poor condition? There are ten or eleven already that are almost unlivable uh at right now. So I, I'm just mentioning that, that I think that my number might be an underestimate. This is obviously, you know, hard to estimate that, but I, I think you might be low on that particular number because the deterioration. Of seniors who can't afford to keep their houses up, uh, and, and, and similar situations is dramatically uh large, I think, for the community.
And Bert, is it your observation that a number of the houses that are needing great repair ha- happen to be mostly older adult?
Yeah, and not always, no, not all.
Not all, it's primarily, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. There, there are a couple of places I visited with Meals on Wheels that I know no one is gonna wanna live on, in them, when, when those people die. People get sick or something.
Yeah.
So I, I, the number of housing units that we have is, is very shaky.
Yeah, I had a, a very interesting conversation with Ruby Nakadu today, when she was helping me to set up here. We've been trying to get together to talk about these issues, and we hadn't, so while I'm setting up, learning how to do this, she's talking to me about, about the issues. And one of the things that I think is important to highlight as we think about our strategies. Is just what you're, you're saying, Bert, as we're trying to serve, we have a whole strategy on seniors, right? When we come to the strategies, our goal area, our goal areas for rental is also due as seniors. Um, there's a great need to have a program that can help seniors to repair their homes. Um, and there are some good examples, I'll just point out to you, uh, and I'll, I'll send this around. I read an article about how Habitat for Humanity um in various other states, and this example was Memphis, the city, but it is, it's smaller areas as well. Uh, working just on this issue of helping older adults repair their homes um to provide housing as we. Uh, the housing crisis is the whole country, it's not just us. And it's interesting for us to think about as we support seniors, is there a way? To assist not just the houses that are really in bad shape, but also that they just need repair, right? There's a lot of those too. As we think about our strategies, is this telling us, is this information that we have telling us that that's something we really need to give some thought to? Um, and that, that is one way of helping to get to our eighty units potentially is by improving what's there, making it habitable for, for the people there and maybe for others. So I just want to raise that uh as we're going through this. And, and Ruby said that was a conversation worth having with Putney, I think, yes. Doug.
Oh, this is Doug for the people out here. Um, there are two charts on this piece of paper. I'm wondering if their attitude, uh, the second chart that's on the next.
Which page do you know?
This is the one that's up here, there.
Okay, page ten.
This says five-year targets, that's five years additional, additional right on there. Is this in addition to the eighty in actual numbers of units? Or is that, we'll make two numbers of responses for the survey, or what's the, what's the basis for this two-hundred-and-thirty-four, for example? Is that in addition to the eighty?
Well, there, there may be, there may be some overlap, so we do not count um i- in the full data report, in the full report, as you'll eventually see. Uh, this is, this is, this slide that you're seeing in front of you is kept on a separate, this table is kept on a sep- separate page, and it speaks to other sources of demand. Um, for housing needs uh that may or may not be met with new construction, or could be interventions or a whole host of things. We don't count those in the five-year demand for new housing, for new construction. Uh, because uh, uh, the circumstances may be reflected in some of these numbers. But uh, the um, the demand for new construction may not be. So uh, we, it does, having two-hundred-and-thirty-four households that are co- housing cost burn does not necessarily mean that you need to build two-hundred-and-thirty-four new. Houses uh to house those folks, and maybe there's another way to alleviate some of their financial burden. For example.
So we don't need eighty plus two-hundred-and-thirty-four, three-hundred and something houses, which is half of the existing.
Right, it's not new constru-, this, the, what you're seeing on this state, on this page is not necessarily new construction. This is the page where we're estimating the needs for new construction.
Oh, that's interesting, now, Robert, that's, that's interesting because. You could, could it be, is new construction just entirely new units, or could it be additional, like ADUs?
I would, I would call an ADU new construction if it had, did not exist on the market before.
Well, it's versions of current housing and/or new housing altogether.
So what do you do with these numbers on this page?
Well, that's a good question, but I, I wanna come back to uh, how do, how do we work with this information? I think, and I'm, I think what I was trying to do is translate it to dimension of the eighty. What does this tell us about what about those eighty houses or units, I should say? And they need to be addressed, they're, an important market for them are cost-burned households, that was a comment I made earlier. I mean, that's very clearly, at least, uh, thirteen affordable ownership homes, thirty-five affordable apartments. So we wanna come back to a question that Andrew, or comment Andrew has made uh in the chat about that, that you can all see up there. A rent, uh, renter up graders, um, and so that might suggest that there's a whole part of the eighty that goes to. Um, having more apartments that are in better shape, that the affordable, maybe affordable apartments, these apartments. Overcrowded households, that's just how many more units we need, and households in substandard units. Like, again, speak to renovation, you know, just in terms of strategy, but maybe, Robert, you can help us. I'm trying to, we're all trying to understand, what does the other data tell us about the eighty? Like, how do we get our hands around that um in terms of who it's for? You've given us some dimension.
And, and if I could ask the same question a different way. So I think this is what somebody was getting at a minute ago. How, how did we get from the almost four-hundred to down to the eighty? Is, is that just in your own expertise of what fraction of people who have some desire for houses, like actually would pull the trigger? Move into a new house, or like, how do we, how do we get from that high number to the lower number?
That, that is a great, that's a great question. Um, it was a conservative percentage that was applied to the total number. Uh, as you just described, it's, it's a number of folks that if presented with the, with the opportunity would actually pull the trigger and uproot their household and move. Um, as a result of something becoming available on the market. Uh, also, there are some circumstances that even if, for example, someone were commuting into a job in Putney. We don't know what the cir- circumstances are for the rest of their household. They may be living with a partner who commutes in the opposite direction, we don't know that. So there's going to be a percentage, a, we're, we're going to assume a fairly large percentage of each one of these categories. Uh, may not uh take up the opportunity if presented with, with new housing. So they do represent a, a certain percentage of each, of each whole group.
Might make a suggestion, another possible explanation of this is that if you have a new house, or a new apartment, you, a new housing unit constructed. Somebody moves into it, that leaves that one they were living in now to be moved back into.
Assuming it in a company. Yes.
So also demand, there are always people demanding for new or bigger places, but you don't have to build each a new house.
Right.
It's like a Ponzi scheme to me.
Well, that's the way it works, right?
Somebody's gonna lose, somebody's gonna die, right?
Well, well, people do.
Well. But that, that's, that's the case in some circumstances, right? So if you look at the, the list that, the table that's on your screen on the left. Household growth are simply new people, so they're not leaving a new, you know, it could be young people coming of age, people leaving Lynn, or college and wanting to stay, something like that. They're not necessarily vacating another unit in town. Due for replacement, those are places that are likely to be demolished, so no one will move into them after, after that's replaced. Re- relocating workers are coming from outside of town, so they're not giving up a, a unit in Putney. Um, and young adults living at home, um, also moving out of their household are not giving up a place that will come on the market. So in that table on the left, they're all places that are new dwelling units required that will not be providing new housing stock when they move. In this case.
Because this thing, moving a person presumably into better accommodations and housing a person in Putney who previously wasn't housed in Putney. You build a new house, you can shove. Um, get a cascade effect and maybe upgrade a bunch of people, but you still only house one additional.
Right, so we can call them new residents in a sense, that might be a simple way of thinking about it. These are new residents, well, we have needs among, among current residents and households. I mean, that's what we're seeing on the other page. Cost-burned households, renter upgrades, those are, those are needs within people who, with, among the people who already have housing.
Right, and if they do move, they might give up another unit, sorry.
Right.
I thought at one time the number eighty came because of a, a, a connection with the infrastructure of sewer and water that would accommodate that number.
It, it did seem kind of magical, I mean, that those two numbers.
It was just a coincidence of those.
But it was just a coincidence, as, as Robert has explained, their analysis came from entirely different direction. But it does, and they did do a confidence factor, they reduced the total number they came to. It isn't a bad idea to think about water, sewer, infrastructure, and we don't even know if we have eighty hookups or not, we think it's eighty. Um, but it seems to be coming from independent analyses.
Okay.
Including the, the, the uh, the confidence factor, risk factor that, that was applied that reduced number down to eighty.
And so, can I take time, Robert, to uh, I'm looking at. Yeah, the same chart, the consolidated residential demand by income. These categories, less than thirty-five thousand, thirty-five, et cetera. Um, is there a line in there that you would consider to be the minimum income which would? Allow a person to move from uh, in, in affordable or subsidized dwelling unit into a market-rate dwelling unit?
Yeah, that's, that's a tough question to answer, Pip, you know, um, I, I've often wondered that myself. Uh, for example, in this line, oops, sorry, scroll where you can see my mouse. Um, in this line that the household incomes between thirty-five and fifty thousand dollars, there are thirteen ownership units that have been identified. Um, you know, at that household income, I don't know how you can build a house in the market, I, I, build a house, period. Um, and so wondering about subsidy, maybe Habitat for Humanity, maybe the land, land trust model, something like that where it can finagle it. I know that didn't exactly answer your question, Pip, but my point is, um, there is not sort of a direct. Direct line between income and demand for tenure type, demand for ownership or renter. There are, there are places like young adults uh who are ready to move out of their, their parents' house, those have all been put into rental units for them to start out. Uh, versus, you know, being twenty-eight and moving out of your parents' house and immediately buying a house is probably almost impossible in this market, so. Um, I think sometimes it might be a judgment call, but in other cases, we try to just lay it out as, as it is. And see if there's a way to thread the needle, see if there's a way to, to build those ownership units at that price point. With some sort of program subsidy or organization that works in that space.
Robert, I kind of got there because I think you just quickly stated that at the hundred-thousand-dollar level, that that might be market rate. You sort of said that quickly in your.
Yes, yes.
And, and so I was wondering whether in your mind there was sort of a threshold kind of below that. And and so I was wondering whether in your mind there was sort of a threshold kind of below that. That it would be challenging to find that housing without, you know, if at at a market, in a market situation.
I think the analysis, if I remember, Robert, the number was, I think, about an income of about eighty thousand dollars. Uh but even that, maybe that was cost burdened. And this is going to Andrew's question in the chat here. Uh clarification, does affordable mean below market, current market? Or at a level not to be cost burdened? And I think most of us are thinking about, we need to address housing so that people are not cost burdened. It's it's a that's a a higher income level than just a um below current market. It's it's a different category and we see from the findings that are not in front of us now. That a lot of households simply cannot afford either to rent or buy in Putney. Um and that's a very large number, and I think the number was eighty thousand or seven, nine thousand. Do you remember that, Robert? Was it I your finding five or something like that?
Uh I'd have to get out of my screen and and go through go to the findings, but.
I think it's seventy two thousand. I remember seventy two thousand.
Two thousand, it's in that neighborhood, so.
Seventy six.
Hundred thousand is a safe number, that that's people at that level are more likely to be able to afford market rate below that, maybe not.
Yep. So along that same vein, Pip, to answer your question, now that we've had this uh discussion, I I did, I took these numbers down here, added them up. Um so twenty three plus twelve, and then that comes up to the thirty five affordable apartments. And I just used affordable as a lowercase a, meaning that there'll be some affordability component to it. Uh if it's whether it's price restricted or not, we don't know, but it's um. You know, some a a good portion of those will be below market rate.
Okay, yeah, I think I might be a little premature in anticipating that discussion. I think we're gonna get there. If when we begin to think about actions in Putney, you know, how best can they be directed at what area of the need? So, thank you, Robert.
I get that.
It sounds like even even though we're officially having a conversation about a housing problem, that for the most part, it's an income problem. That almost everything we're looking at is that people don't earn it, after.
Yep.
Right.
But maybe we're talking about housing because there's nothing we can do about it.
That's a relative statement over time. It the 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 disparity between income and housing costs has. Increased over the years, so you could say it either way, and I think most people say it's more of a housing issue because, yes, well, real income. So done terribly over the past thirty years. Relatively speaking, the change in housing costs has been even more extreme.
This 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 speaks to the concept of the missing middle that that we've been talking about and it's written about in the town plan. That there are people with middle incomes that can't afford a housing because, as Aiden is saying, the cost of housing has gone up. Partly because of the shortage of housing, supply and demand, right? The cost of housing has escalated quicker than incomes. And and so even people with a reasonable, even like seventy five thousand dollars cannot afford housing.
Um yeah, but if I remember what they presented before, that the cost of housing in Putney. Wasn't actually so much higher than other places, but it's expensive everywhere. But what is different in Putney is that incomes are a lot lower than.
The median income.
And if somebody moving here from other places.
Oh, it's important, yeah.
Think that houses are particularly expensive. They think, oh, these are pretty mostly priced houses, so it's only three hundred fifty thousand dollars for a house or something.
Uh it that's right. I mean, the housing crisis is everywhere, and so people.
But but incomes here are lower than a lot of other places.
So so I think that.
It's not actually.
Well, it's Putney versus the neighboring, it's 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 two distinctions, Putney versus its current neighbors. And Putney versus Putney in the past. If you look at it as Putney versus Putney in the past, the story is the same as in the rest of the nation. It's a mainly a change in housing price, but yes, if if you were to say, why is it worse here than it is in the next place? So where you could say, well, there's a relatively worse income to address the.
Or me we have a low median in in.
No, except the even more relevant, the barson would be in Putney versus the suburbs of Boston, New York, Connecticut.
But I I think this all just again calls out that our goals need to include the the idea to um. Address and build housing so that fewer people are cost burdened, that's kind of what it's coming down to.
Well, aspiration.
Well, aspiration is what we can do, and I think that's part of the challenge. We can build more housing that people who have big incomes can move to, that is, and solve the problems, I think.
Then that's part of what I was implying. Thank you. You put that a lot more briefly, that if we were talking as if. For some reason, we just have a shortage of housing, so we build more houses that and ignoring the fact that. Boy, you could build as many houses as you want. Uh the world of people would love to hear, oh, it's just keep coming, you're filling that and telling you not to. Uh if the problem is that we don't, that the people who are already here don't have the money to afford them. And nothing is doing it, gonna change incomes here. That's not gonna help a lot.
Uh Doug, and then I wanna move on because we have, oh, Doug, sorry, there's a there's a post between you and me, so I can see you.
I just wanna say when you talk about building affordable housing, the cost of building is so high. That there's no way you can rent out whatever you're building by affordable rates.
Yes.
That is correct. That is very true.
That is that is the problem, John, that is the really hard one, which is why you heard Robert speak speak of things like Habitat for Humanity. People who undertake projects to build housing so that it is cost um. It's available for people who have, you know, who otherwise can't afford it. So different models, not that. We're we haven't even really talked about that one here, but I think what we're framing up is we have to have a way to provide at least some of the new. Some of those eighty units to be um, you know, reachable for people who are currently cost burdened. And how are we going to do that? I think you you raise a good question, Doug. It's not impossible, but it is a dimension to our strategies.
But I'm also looking at, I can, I have a couple of tenants who are working at like seventeen fifty an hour. So if you figure thirty percent um of their income, there just are no apartments.
Right.
That's half the rate of the average.
That's right. That's for very low income people. There's even people who earn three times that and cannot afford housing. It's, yeah, it's 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 there's very, you know, so there's what is been traditionally called affordable housing. And so people with very low incomes, but it turns out that our need for housing. So that people are not cost burdened is a wider range of it, not just it's people, but it's what we call missing middle. And so how do we provide the eighty units? So that we can minimize the number of cost burdened households, you know, if we looked at it that way. As we've eliminated, we can be make some progress there. So. These, this is a great conversation. I know we have more things to talk about, uh but I'm really glad, Robert, that you took the time to put these. As he he said, oh, you want goals? You mean metrics, that he put these metrics up to help us frame what we're aiming at. And I think we're still getting there. We have some dimension on it, but I think that's. This conversation may have led to the need to to sort of spell that out. So when you think of our strategies and what what is success. It it it's more than just eighty units. In this other dimension. Any other comments before we move on to think anything else you wanted to say, Robert?
Uh so is there anything in the comments? I'm not seeing those uh before we move on.
Courtney just said it's a bit of a chicken and egg problem with regards to income and housing costs.
Right.
I have one question for Camoy, but they could defer the answer.
Sure.
Got to throw it out there. Um. A lot of conversations I've had about houses in other communities and with people that aren't on this committee that are asking about it. I I've rarely heard people come from the demand side that Camoy's coming from saying like, oh, let's estimate demand. Rather than, which seems like it could be totally flexible from five years to five years, depending on economics or things like that. But I hear people talk about like, oh, we don't have enough, we're community, some communities say we don't have enough families with young kids in our schools. Or we have these businesses and there's no place for the employees to work and we need housing. Like, there's specific concerns about not having housing for specific groups of people. That it harms the community for those people not to be housed, like employees at some major employer or whatever the school. And. I have been kind of hoping to hear as part of the assessment of what how much housing we need. Some sort of idea about like uh what the community of Putney needs in terms of housing. So that would also answer a question like housing for who, like.
So workforce housing, what about that dimension is what you're asking about?
For that could be one, for example, like do employers say like, oh, we can't, our employees have nowhere to work? Or does the school have too few people in it? Like, or simply does Putney have too few people at all? Like, is there a reason why you would need more people to move here? There might be good reasons and they could be enumerated. But that would also start to indicate like. How the housing has to be in some way directed towards certain.
Right, I think that's that that's what I'm talking about in those eighty. Can we have some dimension to to what type of housing we need? What does that translate into in terms of our goals? I think the same thing. How much of it is for older adults, how much of it? And so therefore is accessible, how much of it is workforce?
Clear is like older adults, yeah.
Yeah, so I think I think that's what this conversation I think is revealing, that if we're writing strategies. What are the goals or the metrics that we're we're aiming for? It helps us understand where we have to do our work. For example, we talked about repairing the houses of older adults.
It also helped me answer other people when they say for who.
For who?
Like, I know in in Rattleboro, the hospital complains that they have a hard time getting physicians. Because even those people who have a lot of money compared to most people couldn't find houses in Rattleboro.
Right.
Um and so they were actually like a lot of people that they offered jobs to wouldn't take them. But knowing that as a particular target audience, like Rattleboro needs doctors, doctors won't come because they don't have houses. To the extent that that's true, it would mean, I would think, that the hospital should be creating housing for their doctors. But not just creating housing on the market in general, that would go to people that have even more doctors.
Some institutions do that.
So some institutions do that right here in Putney, actually. Um um but but there are other models, I'd have to say. Uh in communities where workforce housing is addressed as a collective issue, not as an individual employer's issue. Um so that's an interesting thing, but what how much, again, Camoy's analysis is not showing. Even though we heard it in focus groups, that we need much workforce housing. Um that was sort of a conclusion. I do wonder about that myself. Does this eighty need to address workforce?
Maybe it's the same thing. So anyway, my my question for Camoy, not to be answered at the moment, but to think about as we go forward. I I'd love to hear not just like demand, like people want things, but uh what is the community? Like, are there certain things that the community, it's like teachers not getting jobs, children, school not having enough kids? Whatever it is that we like have specific populations that need houses for the sake of the community, not just for the sake of the people that want a house.
Thank you, Matthew. I think that's.
I I have sort of a odd question. Um when we say that we need. Or could use eighty additional units. Is the expected construction rate deducted from that? Cause I remember that there was a chart in the in one of the. Slideshows that we were shown previously that showed the rate of construction in ten year chunks. And I I it's not enough construction, but.
Two a year, yeah.
But 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 if you compared it to the two thousand to two thousand ten era, it looked kind of similar.
Yeah.
So. Well, it it was less because it was it was out of four years. The the bar for two thousand two, two thousand ten. Uh was the total for ten years and the bar for two twenty twenty to current was just four years. So if we're gonna say two a year over ten years, should we deduct? Twenty from that eighty when we think about what actions we should take?
I think I think the way, it's it's a good question and we can turn that to Camoy. I mean, that the same question came up, should we count the twenty five units? That seem to be, when the Windsor Housing Trust has been given approval by the Supreme Court to go ahead and and uh bill, you know. Does that, what does that mean for the eighty? And the answer is, well, the eighty did not assume those twenty five units. So if they're being built, twenty five would, you know, reduce that number to what, fifty five, right? So I think it's it's hard, it's a good point, Aiden, you know, what is what is the rate of building? And is eighty in addition to the rate of building or is that eighty including the rate of building that we even say? That's essentially.
To be quick.
Okay. We have a lot more to do. I'm gonna just pause here because we're at seven fifty one. I know this is a conversation we really wanted to announce. And that's why we pulled back to do this, but we need to get to uh how we're gonna set priorities for strategies. And I also wanna talk about the schedule and doing workshops. I am now going to say that that's mighty agenda for nine minutes. Uh since it's um seven fifty one, we're supposed to be done at eight, since we had a couple of interruptions, can we go to eight fifteen? But I still think we need to move on if we can. If we have additional questions about the metrics here. But we've got some given Camoy some some feedback about what we're looking for and our questions, and that's great, but I'd like to move on at this point.
You're you're looking at me, Aaron?
I'm not you, I'm sorry. I I'm looking at the whole room. Yeah, moving on. Okay, Robert, run it. Let's go.
Great, great, okay. All right, let let me take, let me take one sentence to respond to that question I think that Matthew brought up about um housing for who? And then I then I'm gonna move on, cause I just don't wanna get lost uh in opportune time to speak to it. Uh we we have, we have jumped right into housing for whom uh in other with other clients and in other in other towns. When the demographics come by, come come back to us and they show uh something that's lopsided. So there are some communities that we work in where their senior population, for example, in that town, far outpaces all their surrounding towns. In that case, we say, well, let's let's try to build housing for more families to balance the demographics for for the region. The same thing with jobs. We look at jobs trends. If jobs are projected projected to go up significantly. We say, well, we anticipate you're gonna need this much more workforce housing to fulfill those jobs. We have an estimate of what those jobs make, and so this is how much those that housing would require. It's not to say we can't continue to look at this question, but I'm just explaining in one or two sentences why we didn't start at that approach. It's because we didn't see lopsided demographics for this region, for Vermont in Putney. Um that so that's that's the way the angle we came to it with, but we will continue this conversation. We can get deeper into that um at a future time. I just want to take a moment to address the question.
Thank you, Robert.
Um I do have a slew of slides for this uh where time is sensitive. I'm gonna go through them pretty quickly. They're very intuitive. Uh all of you will be able to absorb it very quickly, but let me move through them. And then we'll open the floor with discussion with anything that uh we have time for. Uh so uh we took a first pass. These are our professional opinions. We welcome yours uh of of what we thought was the. The most impactful strategies that you might tackle first and put the most energy toward for the highest return on your effort and expense. Uh we call those top priorities, uh evidently enough. Uh secondary priorities are what we're calling those strategies that may have positive outcomes. But we think you might want to save for when the top priorities are already in motion. So get to the second priorities in our opinion after those top priorities are in motion. And the third bucket that we have is something I call nice to have. Uh that these uh these strategies could help people, they could they could address certain issues that we've identified. But may require a lot of effort or not guaranteed to have high outcomes. Um and that if they succeed, it would be nice to have, and so we put those into the third bucket. So let me walk through how I've uh spliced out the different strategies and welcome your thoughts of what might be different. So in that first bucket of top priority strategies, uh we've bundled these these strategies. Uh dense development adjacent to sewer and water, what you already know is being perhaps behind Main Street is one potential place. And up on Sand Hill Road might be another potential place, but focusing on those dense developments adjacent to your sewer and water network. We think is one of your top priorities. Uh commissioning a village comp plan for infill development within the village, so you can build on empty lots. You might be able to rebuild non-contributing buildings in your uh in your village center for um. As you know, for housing more units, um adding ADUs, adding other units uh through renovation. We think this is a high priority as well uh for the town of Putney. Uh pursuing uh senior housing, I'll get to that in a minute, but we know there's a high cost burden among senior renters and we think that should be a top priority. And then the last two are because we think they're just very simple to execute. Um getting the private schools, facilities managers to talk to one another, to coordinate uh temporary housing needs for. Faculty and other uh folks using the schools or participating at the schools, we think is a no brainer and very easy to accommodate. And then finally, um now that you're doing your rezoning uh contract right now. We think it's uh you should pursue prohibiting non oc- non occupancy uses. Now that you're doing your rezoning uh contract right now, we think it's uh you should pursue prohibiting non-oc- non-occupancy uses. On primocifers and on your sewer and water. Non-occupancy would be a warehouse, it would be a self-storage, it'd be someplace where people do not gather every day. Or very few people would ever gather on those places. Save those, save those lots uh for places where people gather uh on a daily basis. Whether it's housing or business or some other public public use. I just went through verbally uh the reasoning for all those. I won't repeat myself uh to save us time, but this is just bullet points, uh you have a printout of it. Um, of of what I just said, the rationale between why these are top priorities. So moving into second uh secondary priorities, again, our opinions. Uh, the creating rental permits, uh we parked here. And also funding affordable rental improvements, there are some federal and state programs to improve rental properties. We think these would be secondary priorities among your strategies. Here's the rationale why. Um, the create rental permits, as we have recommended. Is a direct response to several uh articulated needs or observations among renters in Putney. They've come from when we were touring the uh the town, we heard it, we saw it in survey results. Um, we've received an email about it, people say that there are lots of rentals that are in poor condition. And they don't have a way to have it rectified, uh speaking to their landlord is not is is not working. And so uh creating this program, we think would be one way to to have a neutral party. And uh have a have a uh a program that would be um self-funding for rental fees. Be able to address some of those physical con- conditions. In any case, there are some concerns, we heard a concern from the from the public about tenant privacy. Uh, this may be something that the town just does not wanna take up, so there's still questions of whether or not the town. Uh, really wants to embrace this, and that's why we think it deserves further discussion locally. Uh, and to put it in that basket of of secondary priorities. Uh, this last one, fund affordable rental improvements, this would be a wonderful, wonderful program uh for the town of Putney. There again, I said there are there are federal funds and there are both state funds to implement this, to provide that funding to um. To fix up rentals and keep them affordable, however, it's going to take a lot of um. A lot of human resources to manage this program, to gain that funding, to oversee the funding, report on that funding. To execute uh execute the projects, um and it may result in the town having to put into some matching funds. Even if the state or the feds put in in money towards it, it may require a a town contribution. For that reason, finding a partner who can oversee it. Um, and having the town commit to matching funds is a conversation you're gonna have as going to need to have as a community. And so for that reason, we put it into the secondary priorities, um it'd be wonderful to execute. But you'll need to have a community conversation of whether or not you have the capacity to execute and the funds to match if needed. All right, last bucket, uh we're moving through these relatively quickly and then we can have any conversation so that you think we might have time for. These are what I'm calling nice to have, uh they would have positive outcomes uh if you were able to execute, but they may um. They're not guaranteed to succeed because of a a number of um extraordinary circumstances. Um, so these are strategies that have uh respond to an articulated need that we heard. And they could have positive outcomes, but they may be resource intensive and impact a relatively small number of Putney residents. And so that's why they're in this this bucket. I think I just had four of these, so going through the rationale between them uh uh behind them. The land trust model to control costs of housing, uh this is, there is already an organization in Putney doing this. Um, and I think they're a tri- a tri-town uh organization. There is limited land for this model uh that can work with donated lots. There's a small number of people that can help overall, but it may be able to satisfy those thirteen ownership units. Uh, that need to be affordable that you saw from our target numbers earlier. Uh, but but in any case, it's gonna take a lot more coordination and uh have. Uh, proportionally a smaller number of outcomes, and that's why it's in the nice to have bucket. The small landlord infill program, this is an idea where you would find a quasi-governmental organization that can bond, that can that can draw down funds. And actually build new construction that they would oversee the construction of on uh. Uh, several different participating homeowners uh properties at a time. Um, at that time, it would turn those properties over to the the essentially rental units over to the owners of the property. Who would oversee them as landlords, and they would have price covenants on those rentals, so they would be deemed affordable. Um, you know, the issue is there are lots of moving parts, this would be a wonderful program to execute, but you need the partner first who's all in. Um, you need property owners who are all in, it would require a lot of coordination to get off the ground. So maximum effort for um a positive outcome, but that's why it's in the nice to have. Because there are just so many, so many things to balance to execute it effectively. And then the second to last one is to track annual demand for services. The reason why this was recommended among the the group of strategies is because we did hear from several different places. Uh, that there are housing needs uh for specialized housing conditions, such as assisted living, group homes. Quasi-independent living uh with assisted services, transitional housing. Among other different models where folks can want to live independently, but also need some su- supportive help. Without us having an accurate and annual count of each one of those specialized housing needs. It's difficult for both a developer and or service provider to be able to put a business plan together. That might meet those housing needs. Um, so we recommended that a local service provider take an annual census, an anonymous census of the different housing needs. And be able to report out to service providers and developers uh annually. So that uh there it may, it may finally meet a critical mass of uh necessary needs. That someone can respond to it with programming or construction. However, uh it's it's a big ask to to have a service provider, take that annual census, put it into a report and distribute it. And then for that report to be read and uh absorbed. We can see where this might peter out over time or get abandoned over time or may skip a year where that organization. Uh, that's doing the census um is um, you know, at a low capacity. And so uh this is, this is also a a high um, a sort of uh requires a high input. For an a questionable output, it would be a wonderful positive output to have new assisted living constructed in Putney. Responding to direct needs, but it will require a lot of record keeping ahead of time. So again, that's the reason why this is in the nice to have column. Oh, sorry, there wasn't one more, but I did want to speak directly to. Uh, some suggestions that we've seen in other uh reports and also that have been suggested by the public. I I just want to acknowledge that we are, we are hearing you, we are hearing these ideas for other strategies. And I want to respond to them more directly. Um, we're we're talking at a high level here, not specifically line by line suggestions to us. But uh, we know of the recommendation for a housing coordinator, or some folks have called it a housing czar. Someone who can really uh project manage and take own ownership of these strategies and other strategies. That can move the market toward uh self-correction in in Putney. Um. The issue that the reason, excuse me, the reason why we have not, Camoyen has not sponsored that directly in our in our bank of strategies. Is because we've also been hearing about uh the high cost of taxes. And we believe that there's extremely high sensitivity spending town money on a new position. Between employment, employment taxes, health insurance and other and other expenses, we can imagine this would cost that uh the taxpayers. A hundred thousand dollars or more annually for the for this type of position, needing its its uh professional expertise. Now, I do know that there are federal funds, uh CDBG specifically, that may that may fund a position like that. But those come with strings attached, those come with strings attached uh with a much more narrow job descri- description. Where that person is limited to oversee federal programs or other um approved programs. They will not have full reign over all the strategies that that Penny wa- might want that per- a position to pursue. It may also require a town match. And for so for all those re- reasons, we're just saying it's nuanced. And it may be price sensitive, and that's why we haven't explicitly recommended it. Though if there's a will and a way to fund a position like this, it it would solve a lot of problems in terms of having the capacity. The town having the capacity to execute at a lot of these programs. And then finally, we've heard the call for al- alternative housing models, tiny homes, shared equity developments, communal living. These have all been raised by members of the public over time, we're hearing them. We just wanna point out that the private sector, those are builders and lenders, may not uh construct these on spec, on speculation. They may not go out and either lend to one of these projects or build themselves at their own risk. One of these alternative types of of housing developments. And take the risk that there'll be buyers that come behind them. What they're most likely require is that the buyers would actually have to come together, hire a builder to build them. And either self-fund or go out and get their own loans to build them. Um, and that's a much more complicated situation than just saying build a tiny home, home village. However, there's a success model in town, um we recommend that you look to Putney Cod- Commons as a model. Of how these alternative housing models might might come to fruition in town. So. Um, this this you've all seen, this was a a very draft working document, uh it's been printed out, you've been handed it. Um, it is our first blush attempt to just fill out who might be the lead, who might be partner organizations. What are some tools and funding sources for them? Uh, tactics which I identify as steps of what you might take. And then we move to priority rationale, um its impact, likeliness of success and feasibility. So these are just ways that we thought about building up the action plan. And the final action plan after your input might um look a little bit more um precise in in how it's it's delivered. With that, so I will rest my case for a moment.
Yeah, you rest your voice too. Uh, I would, uh, on this point, I'm just passing out uh those analysis you had done. That built out action plans and look into the prioritization that you gave to me earlier. I I gave that to everybody as reading for today. Um, as an example of how we might uh think about these strategies, this is, this is. Moyn's thinking about them, we may have different ways of thinking about them, but but I thought it was very helpful to see the structure of this. And I don't expect for us to go over these eight pages of dense writing in this meeting here.
Good.
Um, I I did send this to you early and I know that Doug uh apparently has time, because he did go through and hit all the comments. He sent them to me just before the meeting, so I have not read them, Doug.
Started working on it Friday night for a couple of hours when I quit.
Yeah, in any case, I I think it gives us an idea of how we might build things out. I I agree with a very important point that Robert has made, is that we need to set some priorities, we can't build out. Plans for absolutely everything you think of, we should, we need to do prioritization, we have Camoyens. Look at prioritization and they have their rationale. Um, we may have other things we would say that would have priority, and I think that's a, that's an exercise we we need to do. Um, I would begin by looking at what Camoyen has, but we also might look at it with a different lens. Um, and and come out differently, but before we build out detailed plans, I think we need to set priorities for what we want to do. We can't do everything, um and I agree with Robert, to need to prioritize things. Um, and I'd like to talk about a schedule to get that done, because, and Doug, you have a comment?
And it's like a quick definition on page thirteen. You have uh two point two for soon senior housing, what is your vision of that? Is that like one big building or a cluster of little buildings or how do you, how do you envision that? Is that could belong in one point one or one point two as well?
This is page thirteen of the presentation that Robert just was.
Yeah, it goes one point one dense development, one point two village.
Okay. Please look at, this is the presentation that Robert just gave and he's looking at page thirteen.
There just what your quick and what your vision or your definition?
About dense development?
I I may, I may mention in a prior meeting, and this comes from an outsider uh who understands there are local politics that where this may not work. But um, as as an outsider looking in who's entirely neutral, I would see that as as potentially one one housing complex. And I think it should be near the village, and um I think uh the town might take another look at, is it the Basketville property? Across from the winery, near the village center. Is that accurately?
Yes, yes.
So, you know, I understand this is environmental there, I understand there's that, there's uh some past politics in that parcel, but from a neutral party looking in. Um, I would see it as as one development and something that's walkable in the village. Um, it would have low traffic, low impact on crime and and other and other issues, so that that's my, it's my perspective.
Robert, would, um, thank you for that, and let me just say that um. Item one point two village comprehensive plan for infill development might be a good way to cite where it might go. I mean, I'm putting on the table, mind you mentioned, but there are other ones as well. And it might be helpful to step back and look at it in the context of. Multiple goals for the village, we want housing, but we don't want just housing, right? So it's, it's gotta be a balance, but I think pursue senior housing and find a place for it. I know you think of uh a housing project that's focused on meeting the needs of older adults, or I'll call it accessible housing. Um, is is a a very important strategy for us to look at in the context of, for example. Uh, comprehensive plan for where to fit housing in town.
So, uh, that's an excellent point, and I I I will, I will see my 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 comments to to that of it's excellent point. I will, I will just say one last quick thing about it, is that if one is to use low income housing tax credits for senior housing, that's called LI-Tech. Um, it would likely need to be a bundled development, so a campus, if you will.
Yeah, and we've talked about that before, so thank you for the reminder, Aiden.
I I have a question about your last uh. Couple sentences about what I think you called alternative housing models.
Yeah.
Where you said, you said that lenders and builders would not want to speculate. On such things, and that that makes a lot of sense to me. But speculate is kind of a a loaded and subjective word. And as we look to any option, and we will need lenders and builders. Um, what makes one thing speculative and one thing not? So it's, it kind of implies that some of the plans that we've looked at, which are much bigger than these alternative. Quote-unquote alternative housing models, where you say, hey, let's, let's take a whole chunk of the town and build. Twelve new buildings there for X million dollars, very conventional plan. That that would be less speculative than saying, let's take eight hundred thousand dollars. And build a cottage circle or whatever. I guess what I'm saying is, it sounds like you, you've made this judgment based on your expertise, and when you're gone. How can we know what builders and lenders will see as quote speculative and not?
Yeah. And Aiden, I think you're asking a very good question, um and I want Robert to give his answer. But I think we can also look to models around us in other towns where they're trying to address exactly that issue. Um, the incremental development movement uh increment that that they're doing in Rockingham. It's actually part of a larger movement, and it's meant to be able to bring together. That um ecosystem, people who get involved in development to talk about the development that's needed. And and for there to be support for the development that's needed. Uh, that's a very high level way of talking about what the incremental development movement is, but it really is. Looking at smaller solutions, but in more aggregate, to be able to bring resources to them. Um, that reduces the risk speculative building is risky. Because you don't necessarily know who's going to buy it, I mean, that that would be the basic point of it. Uh, anything that reduce that risk, the more that the Putney Commons model, as Robert put it, you had a group of buyers who said, we. You know, we want this built, come do it, something closer to that model, something that brings those who want the housing. With those who would build the housing and that with those who would finance the housing, so that the solution can be worked through. That's happening in Rockingham, that's happening in other towns, so it's interesting to think about the challenge for rural communities. And how do you aggregate and maybe there's other ways to do that?
It sounds like what's being suggested by like those who might not wanna speculate on and. Is that there, that some of this housing would be built for profit by various entities? And that they'd have to make a certain amount of money out of it.
Well, most everybody who does building needs to get some money out of it, I mean, it's it's your job, right? So.
Well, people get paid, it it seems like some of the kinds, so if we were having smaller sale.
Yeah.
Or for example, if it was specific institutions meeting specific needs, like a landmark. Says we don't have enough housing for employees, and they went ahead and they built a bunch of houses that they weren't selling. They were just.
Right.
Building them, and there were, I mean, a lot of universities on lots of residential housing that is available only to. Faculty members that they rent out. Nobody could live, at least at UCLA, nobody could live at Manhattan teaching if they didn't.
Right.
Might have it, but that would be, that, that's not building it for like a, for profit. That's just, they're like, okay, we need housing for our readers, we build housing, and we will own it for our other hundred years to rent it to faculty. There, there's maybe other entities similar, maybe the elementary school builds some houses, somebody else builds some houses. That would, it seems like a very different approach than this. Somebody has to make a lot of profit, and it would make it cheaper.
That's right.
More affordable.
That's right.
As well as making sure that it goes to the people. If, if there's an intended audience, that it would be for that intended audience.
I'm almost asking you better from the opposite angle, although what you're saying is totally valid, which is, which is, why is it that if you're, you're in the business of financing housing developments, and somebody comes to you with a, you know, conventional housing development, why don't you say, well, wait a minute, you're asking me for this big investment in your rinky-dink town undergoing rural decline? I, bring me twelve homebuyers for these twelve things. It, it seem like, like what I'm saying, why? Yeah.
Most of it's comps, uh, uh, they can show.
I mean, you're asking.
Sorry, sorry, when, when someone comes for a loan like that, they would, they would have to show, hey, here are very identical houses that just sold in the next town over for this price point. So if I build these and put them on the market, we can pretty much guarantee that someone is gonna step forward and pay uh, the same thing that they pay for that same dwelling, um, you know, two miles away. Whereas if you don't have other tiny homes or something else to point to, that, oh, someone's paying this much in the market for an existing tiny home, if you did have that, that, that would work, that very well may work. You go into a bank and say, nine tiny homes have sold for this amount of money, I want to build nine more. They might just say, well, you've proven your case, so here's some money, go build it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I need to wrap us up tonight, um, it's now already after eight-fifteen. Um, the one last thing is what I brought your attention to earlier in the meeting, so I'm gonna come back to it, and that's the schedule. Uh, what's next? Um, so, I heard you loud and clear in our last meeting, we need more time to discuss. Tonight, we did that, and I know that you need to be more grounded in the analysis, so we took time in the prioritization, and thank you very much, Robert, for your effort, it's a very useful. Um, so, I'm proposing that we do a couple of half-day workshops where we can review this prioritization and, uh, adopt a prioritized set of strategies. Um, and then I'd say the second workshop to work on building up the action plan for them. And there could be some work in between here, in the workshop, as a place to kind of uh, test ideas and, and get ready to polish them. So, I'd like to just see some comment on the schedule, you've had it for a little time, and, um, does this suit you? Should we commit to pushing out the community meeting? I'm not prepared now to do one on December eighteenth, though, just time right now. Uh, to do it to se- to do it in January, uh, January thirtieth. Take the time to do these workshops and have another meeting in mid-January, not early January, so, take, see where we are with that, I'll be talking with Camoyne about the results and, you know, see what it looks like, and be prepared to talk about it to the whole community with some confidence. These are the strategies we want to move forward, here's our thought about how they can move forward, and to get feedback on that, do that on the thirtieth. What do you think? Is this, is this realistic? Is this something you're ready to be part of?
So, so you want us, you want to do two days, the first one to select the strategies and the fir- and the second one to.
Work on the action plans.
Do, do we have disagreement on the selection of the strategies? Because if, I mean, I don't, I don't have any reading of the room here, but if, if everyone in the room here just said, yep, mine's good, let's, let's do that, then maybe we could skip the first day.
Well, I mean, I think we need to have that conversation for one, and that, that won't happen, I can guarantee you, in this group in five minutes, it will, it will take a little time. Uh, but if we can move to build, working on, on, on the, uh, and these are half-day, right? I don't think, I, I don't know anybody here unless you hit a whole Saturday at this point.
Three hours.
Yeah, nine to three, you know, and I think in three hours, uh, we can.
Nine to noon.
Nine, nine to noon, sorry. Thank you, nine to noon, uh, three hours, nine to noon. Um, if fire station's available, I asked Karen, we could meet there, and.
That's our commencement, uh, landmark, so nobody from landmark, including me can.
Oh, on the fourteenth or the, or the, uh, the fourth?
So, this is December fourteenth.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Yeah.
Nine, nine AM till one o'clock.
Yeah.
By my.
Okay. Um. Well, other feedback, thank you, Matthew, other feedback on the schedule?
Yes.
I would vote yes on it. Uh, help folks on screen. Uh, Courtney, or Andrew, or Ryan, what do you think about the schedule?
I vote yes.
I'm good with it too.
I'm supportive.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Excuse, Matthew, what, what was the time of the landmark amendment?
Uh, here is, um, nine-thirty to noon, there's the commencement ceremony followed by the reception, yeah. So like all.
On the fourteenth, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Fourteenth of December.
Fourteenth of December.
Yeah, okay, that's the one that would be conflicted. Um, okay, it's pretty hard to find another Saturday in December that I think would work, I think, just that kind of month.
Mm-hmm.
So we might miss you, Matthew, that would be.
Almost too bad, too.
It would be hard, but maybe we can get your input on the, on the priorities before that, and then we do that. All right, I'm hearing general support that this is a schedule we're gonna go with. Thank you all. And I would love it if someone would work with me to plan the workshop. I do my best thinking in collaboration with somebody else. Um, it goes a lot faster. So if anybody would like to help plan the agenda, the approach, I have ideas, but I would be very happy to have someone to look at it for me on it.
I thought what we did with the Housing Solutions Group was pretty successful.
Yeah.
Gender room setup and.
Yeah, yeah, I think just how we're gonna do the prioritization, all that, how we're gonna review it. Anyway, I put that out as an invitation. I, I'm happy to work with any of you, you don't have to put your hand out now, but I would like someone to work with me on it. So, that was the last item I wanted to be sure to cover, uh, in this meeting. Uh, unless there's anything else, I think I will move to adjourn the meeting. I have one question. Yes.
What are the little stickers for?
Oh, yes, because I wanted to do another exit call. But I'm thinking we might not have time for that, I might have it all set up, but I, I, uh, that's why I gave it. You can take the stickers behind, I'll use them this time.
We're gonna, we're gonna discuss the next.
Thank you all, thank you, um, Robert. I'm tired of this, and I want to appreciate that in this message. Um, and, uh, I'm sorry, thank you all, and we'll get minutes out much more.
Thank you, Catherine.
Hi, everyone, nice to see you.
I would say, okay. All right. The meeting has ended.
You can stop.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm good on.